Please rise to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, call the members.
Councilor Cooperrow.
Here.
Councilor Tana Garcia. Councilor Robinson.
Yeah.
Councilor Taylor.
Here.
Councilor Lopez.
Here.
Councilor Vega Maldonado.
Here.
Councilor Zaneda.
Here.
Councilor Brown.
Here.
Councilor Vido.
Present.
Councilor De Jesus.
Present.
And Councilor Judith Garcia. Nine members present, you have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Our first item on the agenda, we have a resolution introduced by Councilor Judith Garcia regarding Earth Day. Earth Day was first celebrated in, on April 22nd, 1970. The late Senator Gaylord Nelson, the founder of Earth Day, called on the people of the United States to hold elected officials accountable for failing to adequately protect the health of the people and the natural environment. After witnessing years of environmental neglect, millions of Americans, all ages, walks of life, and political affiliations gathered in cities across the nation on the first Earth Day to demand basic protections for our planet and to commit to leaving behind a healthier world for the next generation. Earth Day unites people who have been fighting against oil spills, polluting factories and power plants, raw sewage and toxic dumps, the loss of wildlife, and other environmental ills. Earth Day is an annual event created to promote environmental citizenship and action year round. The first celebration of Earth Day was the largest environmental grassroots event ever held at that time and is widely credited with launching the modern environmental movement. Whereas the voices of inaugural Earth Day participants galvanize an unparalleled period of legislative and grassroots activity that changed the way we interact with the environment, leading to the creation of the Environmental Protection Agency and the passage of legislation such as the Clean Water Act, the Clean Air Act, and the Endangered Species Act. By 1990, Earth Day was celebrated globally, with 200 million people in the 141 countries participating in Earth Day events. Whereas new and continuing challenges, including climate change, polluted oceans and waterways, loss of forests, wetlands, and other wildlife habitats reinforce the need of adequate protections for the air we breathe, the water we drink, the land we inhibit, and the animals we live alongside. Whereas the American Public Health Association declared 2017 the Year of Climate Change and Health because changes to our climate are harming Americans' healthy and safety, including respiratory allergies and asthma. And whereas Earth Day reaffirms our national responsibility and a global Earth effort to combat climate change and protect our planet. And whereas Earth Day reminds us of the need to expand environmental and climate literacy, not only to strengthen the environmental and climate protections, but also to accelerate development of green technologies and the creation of green jobs. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Chelsea City Council wished to go on record so as to recognize April 22nd, 2022, as Earth Day in Chelsea, and would like to encourage our residents to participate in the community programs offered so as to make Chelsea a better place to live. Introduced by Councilor Judith Garcia. Do I have a... Councilor Vido.
I'd like to accept and file, uh, commu- uh, accept and file the communication under suspension if there are no objections, and I'd like to speak on it very briefly.
Uh, seeing no objection, this will be adopted, this resolution will be adopted under suspension. You have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to let the community know that our local, um, environmental organization, Green Roots, will be holding some events for Earth Day on April 22nd or April 23rd. You should probably, if you have any questions, you should probably go to greenroots.org to get more information. I also want to say that, um, in the beginning of this resolution, it talks about holding elected officials accountable. I think we've done a pretty good job in terms of making sure that we're advocating for our community, but that we need to continuously be aware of the effect that we're having when we continue to allow developments to come into the community because we are diminishing our air quality. I can barely breathe in this city, and it's gotten more and more real as I've gone iller and iller. So I just want to make sure that we continue to fight that fight because it's one that's really affecting our communities, that rates of asthma in Chelsea are absolutely ridiculous. And so I just hope that we, in light of Earth Day, that I just wanted to make sure that we plant that in our minds so we continue to fight for that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Brown.
President, again, this is great, um, resolution, as we recognize it every year. Opportunity for us to get out and, as the councilor just stated, to work on some of the issues, just press on our community, continue to work to better our community. Obviously, the quali- quality of life and the climates in our community. Um, so it's great that we, um, recognize this, and it's a, uh, position and, uh, an event that's been, I believe, it's in its 50th year now, but we, over the last 10, 15 years here in Chelsea, have taken it to heart, and really, we go out, support our local organizations. There's a lot of cleanup efforts, there's a lot of, excuse me, tree planting. So, again, I want to thank the maker of the resolution who's absent today. Thank you, excuse me.
Anyone else? Any objection to me saying anything from the podium? Seeing none. Um, I want to, uh, concur and, uh, with, uh, Councilor Vido's, um, announcement about the efforts of Green Roots. I want to recognize their efforts and, uh, some of our colleagues here, not only locally but also federally. Uh, more recently, um, we have, um, the air, currently, we have an air study being done in our community to measure the results of, uh, or rather, the, uh, the quality of our ear. Uh, I want to, uh, recognize the efforts of Green Roots for having that done. Also, both our Senator Markey and our Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, who made sure that those, um, those monitors were placed in our community so that we can, uh, finally get some results and hopefully identify the pollutants in our community and then work on addressing them. Um, also, uh, great effort by this administration, particularly Tom Ebrizino and Alex Train, who are working on climate, uh, change here. There's a lot of money being spent and attention on, uh, you know, the damage that, uh, the change in climate, flooding and so forth. Um, I, it would be, uh, nice to take, uh, aware of, make aware of their efforts here and trying to protect our residents in the community. Also, a longstanding, um, event occurs here. We regularly and annually adopt us to be a tree city. I know DBW has gone out and co- and, and, and working with, um, our, our, uh, local group here, again, Green Roots, on making sure trees are planted as much as possible, wherever possible, um, to, again, try to improve our air quality. So I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, make recognition of that, so. Uh, moving on to our next item, we have the inter- uh, order into resolution introduced by Councilor Zaneda regarding Holocaust Remembrance Day. Whereas the countries of the world recognize each January 27th as International Holocaust Remembrance Day, which marks the anniversary of the liberation of the Auschwitz-Birkenau Death Camp complex. This year, Wednesday 27th, 2022, is the start of Holocaust Memorial Day, the State of Israel's Day of Commemoration for the approximately 6 million Jews and 5 million others who perished in the Holocaust. Whereas honoring the victims and survivors begins with our renewed recognition of the value and dignity of each person, it demands from us the courage to protect the persecuted and speak out against bigotry and hatred. On this anniversary, we recommit ourselves combating the global rise in antisemitism. Recent acts of hate across our country serve as a painful reminder of our obligation to condemn and combat rising antisemitism in, in all of its forms, including denial or trivialization of the Holocaust. This anniversary is an opportunity to reflect on the progress we have made confronting this terrible chapter in human history and our continued efforts to end genocide. Whereas the working definition of antisemitism reads as follows. Antisemitism is a certain perception of Jews, which may be expressed as a hatred towards Jews. Rhetorical and physical manifestations of antisemitism are directed toward Jewish or non-Jewish individuals and/or their property toward the Jewish community institutions and religious facilities. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the City of Chelsea, City Council hereby adopts this definition of antisemitism and formally recognizes annually International Holocaust Remembrance Day and Holocaust Memorial Day. What is the will of the council?
I have a motion to adopt, and on the defensive basis, Mr. President.
Councilor Brown asks that we adopt this resolution under suspension. Seeing no objection, any speakers?
Yes.
Councilor Brown.
Again, uh, it's time, an opportunity again that we recognize, as we stated, it's January, but we're low behind, but we still recognize this memory of the millions of folks that was killed in the Holocaust as an international day. We mo- mature, um, we recognize January 27th, but the result is that we still have to be aware that those things happened so, um, so long ago, but they still prevail today that we have to watch and make sure that our actions of the past do not come up and creep up on us. Um, as we know, um, in the last few years, we've been kind of like, you know, isolated and, you know, kind of encaved in, and we want to make sure that everyone feels comfortable and safe, and as we start to get back out into population and start to engage each other and stuff, we want to show some love and some appreciation because not only this happened, but it also happened to other minorities as the resolution stated. Uh, but we just need to keep our eyes open and keep our hearts, you know, somewhat loving and caring. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other speakers? Councilor Cooperrow.
This is a horrible thing. I, it's a, I know, my father was doing World War II. He grew up in the time of the Holocaust. Two of his brothers got killed by Germans, and the horrible stories he used to tell me of what they did to the people was, it's unthinkable, the way they had to live, the way they had to hide inside a caves, and he used to tell me that they used to line up people right up in, in, in front of the squares, and if they didn't tell them what they wanted, they would execute them. So this is a horrible thing. I didn't live it, but my father did. Not in the Holocaust, as, he was one of the 5 million that wasn't in the concentration camps, but he was outside the concentration camps, which was just as horrible. They, they executed a lot of people, innocent people. Like I said, two of my father's brothers got a, they got, they died, they were very young, and this is a reminder to all of us to never let it happen, that not only us, the generation that come after us should always remember that this is a horrible thing. Human life is very important to all of us, and it should never happen. Somebody that lived through it, like my father, they, you ask them what it is, and they will tell you that it's the most horriblest thing you could ever see. And I, the only thing I know is what my father told me, and he lived through it in a way that I could never explain or understand how it is. But through his telling me what it is, I feel for all the poor innocent people that died, that had, that shouldn't have died. All for what? For greed and power. And I hope that that never happens to this world again.
Any other speakers? Seeing none, that, uh, motion carries, we'll move on to our next portion of our agenda, which is, we have a public hearing. There will be a, a, a continued public hearing regarding the establishing of a program allowing any owner-occupant of a condominium unit, a single-family, two-family, three-family home, or four-family home, to receive a reduction on the water and sewer bill for the entire premises equal to 20% of the entire bill. A copy of the home room petition can be found at Chelsea City Council Office, 500 Broadway, Room 306, Chelsea, Mass., or you may email fmalera@chelsema.gov for an electronic copy. So I will open up the floor at this time. Anyone wanting to speak to the City Council on the establishment or the home room petition to reduce the water bill for owner-occupied properties for 20%, please come to the microphone, state your name, your address, and you'll have four minutes. Seeing no speakers, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. We have a public hearing regarding...
That's not, that's not your portion.
We'll now move on to the next portion of our, uh, public hearing section. We have a public hearing regarding the authorization, city-owned licenses. A copy of the home room petition can be found in the City Council Office. This is to have the new five liquor license that were recently, uh, sent to us by the ABCC to the City of Chelsea. If you have, uh, any comments that would like to make to the City Council about having them reserved and coming back to the City, City of Chelsea Licensing Board, please state your name and ad- address. You'll have four minutes to address the City Council. Seeing no speakers, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. We'll now move on to our regularly scheduled public speaking portion. Anyone wanting to come to speak to the City Council on any matter, uh, you'll have four minutes, please state your name and address. Seeing no speakers, we'll now move on to the next item on our agenda, number six. We'll move on to the approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of March 21st, 2027, 2022. Do we have a motion on the, in front of us?
Accept and file communication under suspension.
I'll let the seat.
Councilor Vido and Robinson ask that we adopt these both, uh, minutes from our last meeting under, uh, under suspension. Seeing no objection, that moves on. We have communications from the City Manager. Our first communication received from the City Manager regarding Market Basket Parcels. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to the recent City Council order requesting a list of property owned by Market Basket in Chelsea. I've attached a map showing that all the parcels in the Chelsea owned by the entities affiliated with Market Basket. As best as the city can determine, Market Basket entities own the entire shopping area, which includes Market Basket Supermarket. That area actually consists of seven separate parcels. The city is not aware of any other parcels owned by Market Basket. What is the wish of the council?
If there's no objections.
Seeing none. We'll move on to the next communication from the City Manager. We have a communication regarding grant-funded positions. Dear councilors, I'm writing in response to the recent Council order requesting information on grant-funded positions, including an explanation as to what will happen to such positions if a grant expires. Whenever a grant ends, that is a funding, is a salary position, the city must make the determination as to whether to terminate the position or continue to fund the position through our own operating budget. Typically, that decision is made on a case-by-case basis. For your information, I have attached a list of all positions in the current FY22 budget that are funded by grants and other sources. On this list, three of these grants slash sources are expiring at the end of this fiscal year. The grant funding for 311 operator position, the grant funding for the part-time greeter position, and the redevelopment fund source paying for a portion of the senior housing project manager position, and the civic design and engagement specialist position. The remainder of the grants continued into FY23. My expectation on these formerly granted positions in FY23 are as follows. With respect to the 311 operator position, we are eliminating this position from FY23 budget. We believe two 311 operators plus a supervisor is adequate to handle the post-pandemic volume of calls. As for a part-time greeter, that position will be funded in the DBW building and grounds operating budget. We need three part-time greeters to cover the front desk at all times. Finally, I propose to move to the operating budget, the two housing and community development positions currently paid from the redevelopment fund, that will complete our multi-year effort to eliminate salary positions from that fund. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension.
Councilor Cooperrow asked that we accept and file. You have the floor, sir. Please lower the microphone. Thank you.
I understand, but there's nothing eliminated. Everything is funded, so after the grants go, you still fund it. There's nothing here that says any positions after the grant, the city picks it up. That's the whole point I was trying to make, that there is, the only thing here you got changes the 311, and then it goes back to DBW ground. You just switched it, you eliminated, but as far as everything else in the back, it says full-funded, full-funded, full-funded. Partial-funded, full-funded, partial-funded, partial-funded, full-funded. So in other words, once these positions get, we never get rid of them. That is the bottom line. That's what I want, that's the whole point. I wanted to know. These positions, so in other words, here's the whole point I was trying to make, a simple, it's simple. We tell the people, we're going to get a grant, yes, but you don't tell the people, when the grant is gone, the city picks up the tab. That's the bottom line. The bottom line is anytime you tell the public, we're going to get a grant, and the grant covers this job, you should say to them, once we get the grant and the grant expires, 99.9% of the time, the city picks up the grant. So this is a job. Any job that's through a grant becomes either a full-time job or a part-time job that the taxpayer pick up. That's all the point that I want to know. I want the people to actually understand when they come up here and say, this is a grant, it's going to be paid by a grant. I want to, to tell them, when the grant expires, the city picks it up. So in other words, I'm going return, I'm going back to the same thing, but it's a simple thing. Just tell the people, a grant never expires, the city picks it up.
Thirty seconds.
I'd like to suggest that if the brother councillor has further questions, we send this to the subcommittee, but I think that we should move on.
Yep, absolutely. I was already calling the time.
Yeah.
Uh, next communication, we have a communication from City Manager Tom Ebrizino regarding the order for the FY23 capital improvement plan. Dear councilors, attached, you will find a required CIP loan order for the implementation of the proposed project for fiscal year 2023 capital improvement plan. The order reflects the FY23 CIP submitted on January 31st, 2022, and reviewed by the City Council Subcommittee Hearing on March 4th, 2022. I respectfully request your approval on this loan order following the public hearing on April 25th. What is the wish of the council?
I move to advertise and move it to a public hearing. Under suspension, if there's no objections.
So adopt under suspension the communication and move to advertisement on the CIP. So go ahead. We have the next communication, uh, from the City Manager regarding the notice of waiver of residency pursuant to the Administrative Code. I'm writing to notify you of my intention to hire Ms. Erica McCarthy, 112 River Street, Haverhill, Mass., for the position of the Grants Manager in the Department of Housing and Community Development and to grant her a waiver from the residency requirement set forth in the Administrative Code. A copy of Ms. McCarthy's resume is attached. There were no qualified Chelsea candidates for this position. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension, if there are no objections.
Seeing none.
Mr. President, can I speak to every question?
Counselor Vido and then Counselor Cooperrow with your question.
I have a feeling we're going to say the same thing, but I'll be quicker. I just want to say that, um, we get a lot of these waiver requests, and I understand that maybe there aren't people that are applying. I would really like to see us create a mechanism, whether it's a training program or something with the high school, where we can prepare residents to be eligible for some of these positions, because we keep outsourcing or hiring outside of the city, and I get it. Sometimes we need the skill, but it would just be nice if we can get people within the city to have some of these jobs. Thank you.
No question.
Thank you. Next communication from the City Manager is regarding the approval for the school department for, to pay prior ver- pay prior year expenses. Dear councilors, I'm writing to request the approval of the school department to pay certain prior year expenses from the current FY22 budget. From time to time, municipal agencies are unable to make payments to a vendor in the year that the goods or services are provided. Often, it's due to a lost invoice or some human error. When such interest instances occur, the City Council must approve the payments from the current year department budget from the prior year's obligation. This year, the school department has identified 10 old invoices that require, that require payment. The invoices are itemized and attached to the list. The total amount owed is $21,299.50. The school department has sufficient funds to make the, all of these payments. No new funds are required. The only action necessary is the council approval to make the payments. A draft order is attached. Councilor Brown?
I have a communication, Mr. President.
There may be, uh, an order under...
Something will be coming up under new business.
Yep. We have a communication from the City Manager regarding the appropriation of overlay sewer plus to the Assessors Department. Dear councilors, I'm writing to request that the City Council approve a transfer of funds totaling $96,000 from the overlay surplus account to Assessors Department in order to cover the cost of an expert review of the city's assessment of mixed-use properties. As you may recall, at the time of setting this FY21 rate, I committed to an outside expert review of certain of the city's value, uh, city's valuations in order to address concerns that such values are inaccurate. Last year, we completed a comprehensive review and reevaluation of multi-unit residential apartment buildings. This year's project will focus on the valuation of our mixed-use buildings. Following the RFP process, the jury, the city selected J.F. Ryan Associates to perform this work. The principal and project manager, Mr. John Ryan, is a recognized expert in the field. He was an expert who successfully completed the multi-unit residential review last year. A copy of Mr. Ryan's resume is attached. The cost of the work is $96,000.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think you already captured everything. I ask that we waive the rest of the reading and accept the communication under suspension if there are no objections.
Councilor Vido asked that we accept and file under suspension and waive the reading.
There'll be some coming up under new business.
There'll be some coming up under new business.
We have a communication from the City Manager regarding appointments to the boards and commissions. Dear councilors, persons to Section 42 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I'm writing to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. For appointment to the Board of Library Trustees, Ms. Anne Vanagas Rivera of 4th Street, Chelsea. For reappointment to the Conservation Commission, Mr. Kia Christmas, Cook Avenue, Chelsea, for a three-year term. For appointment to the Community Recreation Advisory Bureau, Mrs. Nook Nugent Franklin Ave., Chelsea, Massachusetts. For appointments to the Licensing Commission, Ms. Alexandria Christmas, Cook Ave., Chelsea. For appointment to the Traffic and Parking Commission, Mara Garrity, Admirals Way, Chelsea, to take the place of Renee Hebert, who resigned. For reappointments to the Chelsea Community Scholarship Committee for new three-year terms expiring on May 20th, Mary Burke, Sagamore Ave., Chelsea, Lisa Lynn Weaver, Franklin Street, Chelsea, Anna Romero, Orange Street, Chelsea, and Juan Gallego, Franklin Street, Chelsea. Respectfully request your approval of these appointments.
I ask that we move this to a second reading? Are there no objections?
We'll move them to a second reading. Any questions on the appointees, please, uh, gear your questions to the City Manager. We have a next communication from the City Manager regarding the request to fund emergency sewer repair work. Dear councilors, I'm writing to request the City Council approve the appropriation from the Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings to pay for a recent emergency work on Winter Summit Street. The total cost of the emergency repairs is $161,172.50. In late March, DBW was alerted to a major sewer break in a sewer trunk line that runs along Winter Summit Street from Broadway to Park Street. Because this 150-year-old brick sewer line is more than 15 feet deep and surrounded by electrical duct banks, the work was especially complicated and required the services of an experienced outside utility contractor. After soliciting emergency quotes and obtaining DCAM approval to waive the lengthy advertisement requirements by Mass. General Law, Chapter 49, Section 44J6, the city retained the services of Albanese DNS Incorporated. The final price for the work was $161,172.50. Albanese has completed all the contract work. Unfortunately, the city does not have available funds in its FY23 Sewer Enterprise budget to cover this large unanticipated expense. However, funding is available in the Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings. DOR recently certified available sewer enterprise retained earnings of $2,887,038. To fund the emergency repair, I ask you appropriate, the appropriate amounts from the Sewer Enterprise retained orders. Counselor Robinson?
Accept and file a communication under suspension, something will be coming up under new business.
So moved. We have a communication from the City Manager regarding a request to fund a new Chelsea High School roof for the school department. Dear councilors, I'm writing to request the city to approve four additional financial transfers to allow the school department to proceed with the major roof repair work at Chelsea High School. The school department has been seeking to fix the roof problems at Chelsea High School for some, quite some time. Last year, FY...
I ask to waive the reading and accept and file a communication, and something will be coming up on the new business.
Councilor Robinson moves that we waive the reading. There will be something coming up in the new business. We'll now move on to communications and petitions to the council. We have a communication received from the Community Preservation Committee Chairperson, Juan Vega, regarding the recommendations for grants on the Community Preservation Fund. Dear councilors, the Chelsea Community Preservation Committee is pleased... Dear councilors, the Chelsea Community Preservation Committee is pleased to send the City Council three recommendations for grants of, from the Community Preservation Fund. At the twenty-sixteen general election, sixty-five percent of the Chelsea voters voted to adopt the provisions of the Community Preservation Act to impose a one-point-five surcharge. On December sixteenth, the City Council voted to establish by ordinance a Community Preservation Committee.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I ask that we waive this reading and we send this to a subcommittee on conference, perhaps? Do we, do we have to approve?
Um, if the council will allow me, I'll explain a little bit prior to, so that there's some back to-
Keep it brief, Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you.
We actually already had approved this previously. Um, what happened, there was an error in the order, original order, um, of what account the money was gonna be transferred of. So we have to reintroduce it, and it's the same item, but with the correction of the actual account, so that will, uh, there'll be money there.
Then I will withdraw my request for a subcommittee on conference, and I ask that we accept and file a communication under suspension, if there are no objections. There'll be something coming up on the new business.
Beyond the new business.
We have a communication received from the parking clerk, Jeanette Citron White, regarding the request for clarification on driver's licenses as a requirement for the application of a residential parking sticker. Dear Honorable City Members, City Council Members, I am writing in response to your request for clarification regarding the driver's license as a requirement for the application of a residential parking sticker. According to Article thirteen of the Citywide Parking Program, Section four-point-two-A of the Residential Parking Stickers, an applicant must submit a current driver's license, other official identification issued by the Registry of Motor Vehicles, a utility bill dated within the sixty days of the request, or any other official documentation which is deemed acceptable by the parking clerk, which accurately lists the residential address of the applicant as residing within the City of Chelsea. The regulations account for, for those individuals who do not have a Mass. Massachusetts driver's license by allowing for a utility bill or another form of documentation as proof of residency. Our office works with residents who ultimately provide a variation and/or another form of document to prove residency. By having this provision in place, our department is able to identify fraudulent applications. However, please know that we are always considerate to each resident's situation, and we will work with them so that they may receive the residential parking sticker. No applicant needs to have a driver's license to receive a residential parking sticker or a permit in the City of Chelsea. Councillor Lopez? You have the floor, sir.
Yes, um, thank you to Jeanette Citron, our City Clerk. I just wanted to, you know, to clarify to the community about people who doesn't have a license, but they have a, a car registered in Chelsea. And, uh, in order for them to get a parking stickers, uh, so they can park in our streets. I have a few calls from people that, uh, they have a car registered under their name, but they couldn't, or they were, they were not, um, able to get a parking stickers. But with this clarification, uh, that a City Clerk sent to us, uh, I, you know, I, I think it will be easy, and like she said, they really work with the resident to, to provide them a parking sticker. So if you don't have a license, but your, your car is registered under your name, bring a bill, and, and, uh, they're gonna check and see if you qualify for the parking sticker. Thank you.
Councillor Recupro?
It's a good thing that they decided to do this. It helps the resident. It doesn't discriminate against them. More or less, if you don't have a license and you register your car here and you have a bill, you get a, a parking sticker, which is a fair thing to do. And I believe that is the fair and good thing to do.
Moving on, we'll have the communication, I'm sorry, unfinished business. We have a home rule petition. All right, apologize. Um, there, ladies and gentlemen, we have a communication from the, our, again, our Jeanette Citron White, our parking clerk, regards to a, the last Traffic and Parking Commission meeting. In accordance to Section six-three of the Chelsea Charter, the following actions were taken at the April fifth Traffic and Parking Commission. Item number nine, to post a handicap sign at three Clinton Street based on an application submitted by Jose Miranda. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension, if there are no objections.
Seeing none, we're moving on. We'll now move on to unfinished business.
We have an order introduced by Councilwoman Ed under unfinished business, home rule petition. Whereas the City of Chelsea has all of its allotted on-premises liquor licenses and has very little if no control over whom said liquor licenses are transferred to. And whereas to census, the census has increased the number of available alcohol licenses, and the city would like to even the playing field as to purchasing of alcohol licenses and to attract more diverse restaurants and business to the city. Whereas the city has determined that the increase in the number of on-premise liquor licenses that are city-owned licenses will enable the city to reach its economic development and equity and inclusion goals. Now therefore be it ordained by the City of Chelsea as follows. That a petition to the General Court accompanied by a bill for a special law relating to the City of Chelsea be filed with an attested copy of this order be in hereby is approved under Clause one of Section eight of Article two as amended by the Article to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to the end that legislation be adopted precisely as follows except for clerical or editorial changes or form only. A notwithstanding the maximum number of licenses authorized to be granted under Section seventeen of Chapter one-thirty-eight of the General Laws of the Licensing Authority of the City of Chelsea may grant the new five additional full licenses for the sale of alcohol beverages to be drunk on the premise under Section twelve of said Chapter one-thirty-eight, provided only to establishments that meet the city's definition of hotels, restaurants, and function halls, provided that in the case of function halls only, the seating capacity is more than one-hundred persons. B, a license granted under this section shall not be transferable to any other person, corporation, or organization, and shall be deemed a Chelsea license. A transfer in violation of subsection A or B shall render the license null and void. C, if a license granted under this section is canceled, revoked, or no longer in use at the location of the original issuance, it shall be returned physically with all of the legal rights and privileges pertaining thereto to the local licensing authority, which may then grant a license to a new applicant. That the below, that the below be enacted as a petition for the adoption of, for a home rule, and that a public hearing is scheduled.
What is the wish of the council? Councillor Robinson?
Vote on the adoption, if there are no objections.
Anyone want to speak on this? Councillor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is something that we truly need here, something that, um, before I was on, earlier when I was on the council, as a councilor-at-large, that I was advocating for, I'm a councillor, Janita. Um, this year is just to go to show you how well and how fast Chelsea has grown. Um, over the past few years, we've seen more businesses, such as mentioned here, the hotels, the, uh, function halls, and because we're entertaining those type of entities, we had no license available for them. So the only way we could actually get licenses is go out and try to get a home rule petition to grant us an additional licenses. Um, I bet you this petition, this request has been, um, you know, talked about, barked about for the last eight or nine years. It's good to see that it's actually coming to some kind of, um, power source where we are hopefully gonna get by it and support it, send it to the city, um, the State House, have them adopt it, and so we can get these licenses again. With our restaurants, our, um, new hotels, there's no licenses available. So it's almost like a taxi license. If you have it and you don't use it, you wanna sell it, it's the highest bidder. This year gives the city an opportunity to do the fair thing and give everyone an opportunity to come in to have these licenses. So again, thank you, Mr. President, for good work, for keeping up with this and pushing it through. Thank you.
Councillor Vito?
We just had a subcommittee on, on, on this topic at six o'clock. But for those that weren't able to watch, I just want to re-clarify that this is five new liquor licenses that the city is getting as a result of the new census. And rather than, usually, these liquor licenses go for a lot of money, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. But in this case, what we're doing is trying to promote equity and inclusion in the city, to allow people that otherwise wouldn't be able to afford a liquor license to be able to kind of level the playing field and give them an opportunity to own a business and offer liquor. But if they sell the business, the liquor license comes back to the city, so it's not transferable. And so I just want to just say that for the record for other people watching at home. Um, I also want to say that I am in support of this. I think this is a good opportunity for folks, um, in our city to be able to kind of get their hands wet, or somebody that wants to start a business that doesn't have the capital. Um, and we don't need to talk about who those people usually are, but it's usually people like us. Regular folks who just wanna have a business, but they don't have the capital to, to afford the hefty fees of these liquor licenses. So I am in support of this home rule petition, and that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I have reservations about this. I, I acknowledge and applaud, I think, its intent on trying to bring more people into, uh, the business community. Um, I think that's a very worthy endeavor, and I've always supported that uh, as far as, uh, you know, bringing, bringing more people. It's the American dream, not only to own your own house, but also to own your own business and, and try to make a buck. This proposal, though, would create kind of a two-tiered system, and I'm worried that, about two things. I like the fact that these licenses would come back to the city. But these are only five licenses, and you have another thirty that are, uh, that are regular licenses that get sold. So I don't want to impact, or negatively impact, the people that already hold licenses, that paid a lot of money for those licenses. And if they try to go sell, uh, their business and their license, uh, somebody might, you know, wanna just come and get the free license when they've already, uh, paid a hefty sum for theirs. I think that there are better ways to try to encourage, um, more people to get involved into business than this. You know, I think we all remember the Great Recession, where banks wanted to do, I think, much the same type of thing, and giving loans to people for their mortgages that really couldn't afford them. And this is how we get into financial trouble. So while I'm not sure whether this is gonna work or not, it may be worth a try to see, uh, i- if it does work or not. I'm, I'm, I'm very skeptical about it, uh, but, uh, you know, it, it, good intentions aren't really enough in business. You know, most businesses, most new businesses fail. And especially in the hospitality business, of which I myself am a, am a business owner in the, in the hospitality industry. I know how hard it is. And so, uh, I, I don't want the city to lose revenue by having businesses who can't really afford to be in business, get licenses, and then not being able to make it work, and the city loses revenue over lost meal tax. So I, I just think we need to, to think this thing through, and, uh, those are my reservations. Thank you.
Seeing all the comments, the City Clerk will call roll.
Councillor Recupro?
Yes.
Councillor Tenavagazia?
Yes.
Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Taylor?
No.
No. Councillor Lopez?
Yes.
Councillor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Councillor Roy, uh, Councillor Aberzina?
Yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
Councillor Vito?
Yes.
Councillor De Jesus?
Yes.
Councillor Judah Garcia?
Absent.
Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine in favor, one new, and one absent. Motion adopted.
The ca- motion carries. That will be sent up to the State House. We now have a next home rule petition introduced by Councillor Recupro regarding establishing a program allowing any owner-occupant of condominium unit, single-family, two-family, three-family, four-family, to receive a reduction on the water and sewer bill for the entire premises equal to twenty percent of the entire bill. What is the wish of the council?
Accept. I'd like to take, take a roll call vote, and I'd like to speak on it.
Uh, Councillor Recupro asked that we have a roll call on this home rule petition. You have the floor, sir.
This is a simple thing. It's not very hard. It's very simple. We're trying to give homeowners and tenants a break in their water. The only thing we're doing is we're sending it to the State House. They have to approve it. We're only telling them, "We wish to try to give a homeowner some type of break." It's not much. When you come to it, it's not very much. They might say, "Oh, you add it on to somebody else, or you do it this." We are city of first. We should be, this would be the first one in the state ever tried to help homeowners. So more than likely, it's guaranteed that it won't pass. But if we don't try, why not give it a shot? At least we're telling our constituents and the homeowners of our city, "Listen, we are listening to you. We're trying to do something for you. We're not completely heartless and don't understand." So this is a thing, to at least try. It's no guarantee that it's gonna pass. It's, it, it's, there's no guarantee, but at least we're making an effort. There's nothing wrong with making an effort. And like they say, "Why not us be the first?" What's wrong with being the first? Let us be known as the city of first. So I hope my colleagues agree that the homeowners and the tenants need some type of help. It's not a whole bunch, but at least let them know that we are thinking about them. That's all I, I can say. I can't say much more. It's up to my colleagues to send it to the State House and let them determine it. Because the only thing we're doing is sending it to them. We're not making, we make the, if they approve it, then later on, we will make the decision. If they don't approve it, it never, nothing happens. So why not try? Thank you.
Any other comments? Any objection if I make any comments from the podium? We'll, we'll be quick. I appreciate Councillor Recupro's attempt to provide a relief, uh, to the owner-occupants in particular on this one issue, uh, particularly. He's been very vocal and adamant and persistent on reducing, uh, the, what homeowners pay for water and sewer, and it's understood. But I have my reservations, and it's a number of them, so. One, yes, we do have a tax shift. We do shift taxes on a property so that homeowners, especially homeowner-occupants, uh, get a tax break. And we provide them with the maximum allowed by the state, and that's thirty-five percent. That means the other properties are paying more, particularly, um, one, residential, and two, uh, commercial and the industrial. The argument in favor of giving a break to residential properties, owner-occupied in particular, is because we are not allowed by the state to look at a multi-unit building, a larger complex, whether it be the Chelsea Clark Apartments, Parkway Commons, or One North, and say, "That is a business," and that we should charge them the same rate as any other business, whether it be the Moolers and such. We're not allowed. We can only charge them residential rate. But we shift, and by giving a tax break, a residential rate break, we lower that cost on the homeowner-occupants and increase the residential rate so that those that are running a business, um, pay a little bit more. So that's how I differentiate this. I don't believe in giving a shift to, um, on the water break for the very reason that unlike, I treat water and sewer as utility. You pay it as you use it. You pay, you have a gas bill. However much you use for gas, you pay. Whatever you use for electricity, you pay. Water and sewer the same. I don't think that if we have no method of ensuring that a homeowner who's getting a break is being diligent, using water-saving facility, uh, you know, methods, whether it be the toilet that has the one-two option, whether it be showerheads that, um, use, uh, less water, or whether it be a washing machine. Yet they're asking, by doing this, you're asking the other residents and tenants to pay more. So why should a tenant next door be paying and subsidizing the owner-occupancy? And so I don't think that's right. They stated here that condos would benefit from this, but in actuality, many, the greater majority of the condo- majority of the condo owners actually won't benefit, because many of those buildings do not have separate water and sewer meters in those buildings. Only the newest ones, because when we passed the condo conversion law, we required new construction to have separate water meters. But all of the large complexes, whether Admiral Hill, Spencer Lofts, you name it, any larger apartment building or rather condo building, whether it's on Kariav, the little brick low buildings, any of them do not have separate water meters, so they will not be able to get a benefit. So there's a certain class. You could be an owner-occupant of a condo, you will not get this break. I think it's unfair to ask others to be paying for something that you're using. So again, I think, and that opens up to a liability. This could be, we had previous experience with this council of passing a water, a type of a break, and we found out that it was illegal and could not do it. And if we pass this and someone opens a class action lawsuit, which if you're a large apartment complex owner and want to sue the city and say, this is unfair to make us have this burden, you then ask them not only to look at this break, but the current break that we give seniors. Our city manager already told us, it's possible that that break on the water rate that we give seniors is very similar to this and could be reversed, and someone could want to sue it, I mean, sue against it. So why, why open that up and maybe do away with not only this, which has no chance of passing, but also one that we already currently give to seniors? But those are my reservations. I'll be voting negative. I appreciate it, and I'll be more than willing to work with the counselor on trying to lower our water and sewer by examining the budget every year and seeing if we can't do something better with our water and sewer, because we did adopt to have that in-house, and we were supposed to see savings. We should be demanding as counselors to make sure that the water and sewer department now in-house is saving the money that they, we were promised, so that our rate payers are paying as less as possible. So those are my comments. Counselor Taylor.
Counselor Cooper wanted to speak again, so I'll yield him my time.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. So you heard a lot of stuff from the president. He tells you liability. Well, you, if you're a senior citizen, you get it. How come they're not liable? Okay, there's your liability right there. Senior citizen, get it. How come nobody's liable? Two, he calls water a utility. Water is a necessity of life. It's not a utility. You can't shut your water, because if you shut your water, you can't do nothing. You die. Three, there's many more things. You subsidize when you give a homeowner a residential exemption. You are subsidizing already. So you put in the burden on other people to start with. So, but he forgot to tell you that the total, the water department, the city collects twenty-eight million dollars a year in water. Twenty-eight million. You're only going to give back everybody in this city, everybody that owns a home. The ones that benefit is homeowners and tenants. One, you're going to, it's going to cost one point four million dollars to give everybody that. It's twenty-eight million dollars. You can ask the city manager what it is. It's twenty-eight million dollars that they collect from the water revenue each year, and it only costs one point four million to give one, two, three condo owners, everybody in this city, a break. Three, what he forgets to tell you too is that people that rent already are getting charged water extra included in their rent. So what are you saying? It doesn't make no sense what he's talking about. For one, everything you subsidize already by giving them a residential exemption. Two, he says you're liable, but people already get a water discount, which is senior citizens, and they're not being liable. Three, water is not a utility. It's a necessity of life. Four, tenants already are being paid. They're getting charged already by that. The only thing we're doing is, we can't act on this, like he says it's illegal. That's why it's going to the State House. So we can't do it? He's telling you it's illegal. Okay, we know that it's illegal. That's why we're sending a home rule petition, because we cannot do it. So what are we doing? We're asking the state to approve something that is beneficial to all the people of this city, not only the homeowners, the tenants. Some tenants, they already, I am buildings, get charged water already. I said that already, but the whole point is this. We are not saying we're going to do it. It has to go to, we asking the state to allow us to do it. And that's up to the state if they want to. The state, more than likely, the state's probably going to say no, because it's the first one in the whole state to have ever been done. What do I got? Another minute?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, wow. Let me see. All right. Here's my last thirty seconds. This council can do whatever it wishes, but at least this council can send a message to the people outside that you care for them. You are willing to put an effort to it. If you stop all this or even going to there, what are you saying? We don't care about you. We're trying. What's wrong with trying? It never hurts to try. Life is made of trying. So let's give it a shot. Why not?
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, the clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Cooper?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Yes or no? Sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado?
No.
Counselor Abadina?
No.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus?
No.
And Counselor Judah Garcia, missing. One, two, three, four, five in favor, one, two, three, four, five opposed. The motion is defeated.
The final tally was five to five. The motion fails to carry.
We're moving on to second readings, Mr. Chairman.
We'll now move on to second readings. We have unfinished, I'm sorry, not unfinished. We have second readings in order introduced by Counselor Brown regarding the city council authorized the appropriation of one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty from the free cash to the Bunker Hill Community College Program expense account. What is the wish of the council?
If possible, if we could take H, I, J, K, and L. We had a subcommittee last week. We had the committee members, and we also had additional council members and city managers, other department heads were here to explain the appropriations that's being requested. We all have some notes. If you want, I can go over a few of them. If not, I'll just ask for a roll call on the first five and take them five at a time.
Just for clarification, you want in the top right-hand corner of the agenda marked, you want eleven H?
Correct.
Eleven, eleven I?
Correct.
Eleven J?
Correct.
Eleven K?
Correct.
And eleven L all taken as one roll call?
Correct. And if the clerk could just read the?
Yep, I'll read the account and the amount. So we have one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty to the Bunker Hill Community College Scholarship. We will have fifty thousand from elder, so I'm sorry, going to the Elder Affairs Contract Services for the senior transportation. We will have four hundred thousand dollars of free cash going to the Housing and Community Development Contract expense for outdoor dining, storefront improvement, public art, and events. We'll have an order of sixty thousand of free cash going to the FY22 Auditing Professional Services to upgrade the munis system. And we will have an order of fifty thousand dollars of free cash to the DBW Streets and Sidewalk Signs Programs for new banners.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I?
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, just very quickly, we had this meeting last week. We had this two weeks ago on our agenda. We asked all the counselors to read them. It's great to have all the counselors, many of the counselors last week before with the city managers, Alex, other department heads, just breaking it down. This year budget is an intense budget for allocation. It's about fifteen million dollars that we're going to vote on tonight. Again, this is going to show you how well that we are caring for our community. The first one is the education that what we're going to do is continue the funding, the support of the high school to the Bunker Hill Community College Program. Secondly, we're going to support the seniors again with the continuing service that we have with them with the transportation downtown initiative throughout the COVID. We know, we spoke about it today regarding helping them and igniting, you know, excitement back into our community. So there's a bunch of money we're putting aside for that. There's a lot of great things in here. We talked about the quality of life and air and earth day. You're going to find out also today, we're going to be spending four, a hundred or one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for a study. We all agreed that it was a lot of money for not what we were getting, but it was worth the study so we can have some kind of idea how we can leverage to get more support from Massport. So I hope, if you have any questions, please feel free to just glance through the next five, and hopefully we'll be able to vote them five up. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to just let people know that being on the finance committee, and we had a lot of explanation about what everything is and how all the money was broken out. I encourage people in general, always go back and watch the subcommittee meetings, because there's a lot of information in there. This is where we kind of argue about it or discuss what's a good idea or what isn't. And you get a lot of explanation as to why we're spending money, what that money's actually going to, and where the money's coming from, and why it's being spent. So, you know, I like it that people watch the city council meetings, but go back and watch the subcommittee meetings, because you really do get a lot of information there, and it's beneficial. And I think the more knowledge the public has, the better off we're going to be. Thank you.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes, I would like to know if any Chelsea High School graduates are allowed to apply for this scholarship, and how you choose who gets it? I don't know if we can answer that. I would like to know.
I'll answer from the floor, I mean, from the chair, and that is that this question was previously asked by your colleague, Counselor Cooper. We received the communication from the superintendent on the manner in which the students are selected or accepted, basically, for this funding, the requirements or the types of classes that they may, they need to take in order to qualify for the scholarship. And if you'd like, I welcome you to have Fatima or to our clerk to provide you a copy of that letter again, which was already brought to us by the superintendent, and/or reach out to the superintendent so she can go over it with you. But a letter was provided, a question was asked previously. We received a communication explaining the process, and if you have any questions after reading the letter, feel free to reach out to the superintendent. Any other comments? Counselor Cooper?
For the people that are watching this, the one hundred and forty-seven thousand is not what they give. It comes out to almost three hundred thousand, two hundred and some change. And there is a subcommittee supposed to be for them to let us know how they give this money and who's eligible to get it. See, here it says one hundred and forty-seven thousand from free cash. That's only added to the money that they already get. So that's what you have to tell the people. It's not, they don't get one hundred and forty-seven thousand. This is a supplement. And we have a subcommittee on it. Supposed to be a subcommittee to tell us exactly how they go about giving these scholarships. I don't know when that's coming, but it's supposed to be there. So, and this is not, this is just supplement. It's not the total amount that they receive. Is it, Mr. Brown?
Through the chair? If you have, what is the question?
Okay, the question is, this is just additional money to the already amount that they receive, isn't it?
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, to the previous amount that they already have in the, in that fund.
Right. So this is just an addition to the money?
Does, an addition, or rather, another, this year's contribution to that account?
Here, it doesn't actually say the total amount that they receive.
Does it, you mean, how much is in the account? All right.
Well, this is, this is to say, but I want the people to understand, this is an additional money. It's not all the money that they get, because we appropriated more money for them. That's, that's the thing.
Okay. Counselor Vido?
I have no objections with the order, but in fairness, the last council meeting where I was here, this was sent to a subcommittee meeting for us to discuss. The superintendent did send a letter to us. I did read it, great explanation, but we did ask for a subcommittee. I think it's only fair for us to withdraw that one, send it to a subcommittee, and vote on the other items, just because we said we were going to have a subcommittee on it, and we never did.
Actually, it's scheduled for April twenty-seventh. Again.
So why would we vote on something before we even have the subcommittee on it?
Well, I think that the question is, we're talking about the process.
Correct.
While we're doing it, that we, there was no objection to, or we didn't want to hold up any of this year's graduates. So the idea was we received a letter from, we received a communication, and then waited and sent that communication to the subcommittee, which is being held on the twenty-seventh. As you know, typically, we allow the person who makes the order to schedule the meeting. So he scheduled.
I think because we heard, I've heard two brother counselors express concern, I would ask the chair if he'd be okay with just withdrawing that one particular order until we do meet, just to be fair, and we vote on the other ones.
Well, we can, you can make a motion, but maybe that's done on a roll call vote. Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the fifth year that we are supporting this. This is not different from last year. Again, there was a counselor that stated that he wished to have a meeting regarding this. We had this meeting last week. This question did not come up. You have counselors that spoke tonight that was at that meeting, that this question did not come up. It's only in regarding, regardless of how much we are approving tonight, which is one hundred and forty-seven thousand, it could be five hundred thousand dollars. That's already been approved by this council, if you want to know what the remainder is. We're doing what we do annually, supporting our students, our youth here in the city of Chelsea. I ask again that we have a roll call vote on this, and, you know, the first five and move forward.
There's a, I'll get to, so right now, just to clarify, there is a roll call on the floor to not vote as part of the five made by Counselor Vido, that we withhold a vote on this one in the inclusion. That is going to be before us. Is there anyone who wants to speak on that motion to withhold and suspend the funding tonight? Counselor Taylor, then Counselor Robinson.
So exactly how the selection process is done really doesn't have anything to do with the amount of money that we're giving to them. So I really don't see any reason to hold up the funding and do it. I do believe that we can still have a subcommittee on conference about and having the superintendent come in and explain it to us. I think that that's, that's fine. But I don't see a need to withhold the funding tonight. I think that this vote should go forward, and I'll be voting no on the roll call.
Counselor Robinson.
Just maybe a little clarification. How the scholarship works, there are students who attend Chelsea High School who take classes at Bunker Hill presently. So therefore, they get accepted to Bunker Hill, they are able to apply for a scholarship. If you are presently in Bunker Hill and you're a Chelsea resident, you have the option if your grades, if the grades meet the requirement, you're able to apply for that scholarship. And I believe that's how it works.
So right now, we have a motion on the floor to whether or not we will accept this as part of the five? Okay?
Trying to be fair here. I don't, I don't give the money. I'm just, I'm just trying to be fair.
It's not wrong to give it the money. If anybody wants to give the money.
I'm just, I'm just, but let's just, for the sake of transparency and process, let's go through with my roll call to withdraw it. If it doesn't pass, then we vote on the money. I just want.
Okay. So this is a vote to whether or not we? Correct. This is a vote to see if we take this and not vote on it tonight and refer it to the subcommittee. A yes vote will hold back from voting in the approval of the free cash going into the Bunker Hill. of the free cash going into the Bunker Hill Community Scholarship Fund. A yes vote will allow it to go forward.
Explain that again.
A yes vote, I'm sorry. A yes vote will send this order, the Bunker Hill Scholarship money, order, to the subcommittee. A no vote will allow it to remain with the original five, and then we will vote to approve all five together.
Okay. Counsel Recupero.
No.
Counsel Tenere Garcia.
No.
Counsel Robinson.
No.
Counsel Taylor.
No.
Counsel Lopez.
No.
Counsel Vega Maldonado.
No.
Counsel Abadina.
No.
Counsel Brown.
No.
Counsel Vito.
No.
What's the point of making a vote when it's already decided?
Counsel, please, hold back your comments.
No.
And Counsel Garcia absent. Motion defeated. Now you have the whole package.
Thank you. We have, we now have on the floor the five, please, counselors, we now have on the floor the five orders to approve. The clerk will call a roll.
Counsel Recupero.
Yes.
Counsel Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Abadina.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Vito.
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus.
Yes.
And Counsel Garcia absent. Ten in favor and none opposed. Motion adopted.
Okay. We'll now move on to the next items. Counsel Brown asked that we take the next five items to vote as one. I will state the account and the amount. We have in the top right-hand corner, the 11, I believe N, correct? Starts with 11N?
Yes.
11N, we will, it's, the last one, oh, I'm sorry, we, the, the, the last five ended on the banners, so the next one is 11M.
M.
We have $50,000 in free cash to DBW Streets and Sidewalk Signs for new electronics crosswork signage. We have 11N, which is $293,000 of free cash going to CYP F-22 Forbes Public Safety Improvements, for safety improvements at the Forbes site. We have 11O, that is the appropriation of $147,000 of free cash to CIP for Massport Noise Study. We have 11P, which is the $10,000 of free cash transferred to ISD Regular Salary Account. And finally, we have 11Q, which is $320,000 of free cash to FY-22 Building Renovations Improvements. Counsel Brown asked that we do a roll call on these five.
Counsel Recupero.
Oh, sorry, Counsel Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Clerk. Again, these are some issues that we looked at. The biggest pressing one that was for us was the Forbes Public Safety Improvement. It's $293,000. We all thought that was a lot of money for what they were asking us to do. Again, just want the public to know that at some point, the owner, the property owner, or, well, we will be getting this money back. So this is something that we have to do to keep that building safe, liability for anyone that gets through there and something happened, the city's covered, security. So we're doing a lot of infrastructure over there. But at some point, we've been told that this $293,000 will be coming back to our coffin. Thank you. That's right.
So, anyone else saying no? We will now call a roll.
Counsel Recupero.
Yes.
Counsel Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Abadina.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Vito.
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus.
Yes.
And Counsel Judy Garcia absent. Ten in favor and none opposed. Motion adopted.
We'll now move on to the next five financial orders. We have 11R, City Council, $35,000.
Yes.
Yep, 11R, $35,000 in free cash to DBW Structures and Grounds Overtime Account. We have 11S, which is $40,000 free cash to DBW Streets and Sidewalk Capital Improvement Projects. We have 11T, which is $160,000 of free cash to DBW Streets and Sidewalks Overtime Account. 11V, $35,000 in water retained earnings to the Water Department Overtime Account. And number 11V, which is appropriation of $35,000 in SOAR retained earnings to DBW SOAR Overtime Account. Counsel Brown.
Ask that we make a motion on the roll call vote. If you got this quick.
I will allow, I will allow Counsel Vito to recuse herself.
That might have been for the Water Department, and so I would recuse myself from that one, but I shouldn't have to recuse myself from the other orders. So, can we just pull that one out separately?
Yeah, that's why.
Okay, so, we will take, yeah, you should be accusing yourself also.
Yep.
That's why.
What are we doing? Are we doing that one first? Because it's not till four.
I'm just waiting for, he has to, yeah, okay. I think we're just gonna call the roll on, we have the $35,000 for the DBW Structures and Grounds, the DBW Sidewalks Capital Improvements, DBW Sidewalks and Streets and Sidewalks. Those three will be voted on together. I have the first three, 11R, 11S, and 11T. Ms. Vito is allowed to vote on those. So 11.
I got them. These two separate? U and V you want separate? You have three.
First three, 11R, 11S, and 11T.
RST.
RST. We're voting on those.
We have a roll call on 11R ST.
RST.
Yep.
All set?
Yes, I'm ready to go.
So Counsel Recupero is recused?
Yes.
Okay. Let me write that down. Okay. Counsel Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Abadina.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Vito.
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus.
Yes.
And Counsel Judy Garcia absent. Also, you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine in favor, none opposed, one absent, and one recused.
So now, we're gonna be voting on 11V and 11, I'm sorry, 11U and 11V. 11U and V. 11U and 11V, they're both related to water.
And Counsel.
And Counsel Vito is recusing herself.
Counsel Recupero.
Ah, we, we authorizing $70,000 for overtime in the Water Department, right? Is that what we're, we're voting on?
That's correct.
Huh?
Thirty-five and thirty-five.
Thirty-five, thirty-five, right? That cost is gonna go on to you, to you, the tenants. Whoever rents, you're gonna pay the thirty-five grand.
Thank you for the drama. Counsel, I'm sorry, the clerk will now call a roll.
Counsel Recupero. Counsel Recupero.
Counsel Recupero, yes.
Counsel Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Counsel Abadina.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Vito recused, Counsel De Jesus.
Yes.
And Counsel Judy Garcia absent. Nine in favor, none opposed, one absent, one recused.
Okay, we can now have Counsel Vito come back in. We will be looking at the following orders. Oh, she's, I see her. She's at the water.
Give her a moment to get in.
But while she makes her way back into the room, I will announce which ones we will be voting on. We have 11W, $25,000 to the legal department. 11X, we will have $49,000 of free cash going to employee benefits unemployment account. 11Y, we have $112,000 of free cash going to the Parking Department Services. 11Z, we have the City Council authorized $100,000 of free cash to the Solid Waste Trash Pickup. 11A, which is an order of CIP, I'm sorry, for the transfer of the CIP for the Veterans Turf. 11BB, CIP Williams School Boiler Replacement, transferred $150,000. And our last one is, I'm sorry, we're gonna do the next two, 11CC, which is the transfer of, of $145,000 portion.
You wanna do W to Z?
Okay.
W to Z.
So we're doing W, X.
X, Y, and Z.
Y, Z, and A, and AA.
You wanna do AA?
It's 11AA. 11AA.
Those, those last four, AA, BB, CC, and DD are all no longer needed funds. That's a separate subject if you wanna keep them together.
We're not including AA.
That's what I said, oh, yeah.
So the first four, sorry. Clarification, we're gonna be doing 11W, 11X.
Yep.
11Y, and 11Z.
11Z, okay.
Counsel Brown asks for a roll call on those four orders.
Can you repeat that again?
We're doing 11W, top right corner, which is Legal Services. 11X, $49,000 to Employee Benefits. 11Y, which is $112,000 for the Parking Department. And 11Z, which is $100,000 to DBW Waste Trash Pickup. Counsel Brown, just a roll call?
Just a roll call.
Yes. And prior to the vote, I just wanna say that I'd be remiss, Counselor Taylor spoke about watching the subcommittee meetings, and also, it was something important that Counsel Vito about trying to have these televised. It's the reason why these meetings, subcommittee meetings were moved into the conference room, so that they can be televised. Shout out to Ricky, the Les and the team, and if you didn't make it that night, they're also on YouTube and on Facebook. And I encourage my colleagues to please share the community page, Chelsea Cable, so that through 11 of us getting this conferences out, more and more people are able to see this. With that being said, we'll now do a roll call.
He's recusing on this one too.
Okay.
Okay, Counsel Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Abadina.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Vito.
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus.
Yes.
And Counsel Judy Garcia absent. You have nine in favor, none opposed, one absent, and one recused. Adopted.
Mr. President, I make a motion, if you're not there yet, on the next four orders, 11A, 11BB, 11CC, and 11DD, they've been moved to a second reading.
These are your second readings?
They are second reading, sir.
You want a roll call?
Um, okay.
Roll call.
They're stamped first reading already, so that's the second reading.
I thought it was second reading.
Nope, it's second, this is a second reading.
Okay.
We haven't gotten to new business yet.
Okay.
We have an appropriation of chapter of $190,000 of the unexpended portion of the 2018 CIP from the Field Turf to be transferred to the stabilization and be used for the 2022 CIP 7070 Webster Avenue project. This is for the new building, the school department at the corner of Webster Avenue and Clark. Counsel Brown asked for a roll call?
Yeah, roll call on the last one.
11AA.
You do a separate roll calls?
Separate roll call. This is a, we're using.
Middle School Boiler.
Yeah, it's, it's the unused funds of a previous CIP going into this year's CIP.
Counsel Recupero. Counsel Tenere Garcia. Counsel Robinson. Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Abadina.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Vito.
Yes.
And Counsel De Jesus.
Yes.
Counsel Garcia absent. Ten in favor and none opposed. Motion adopted.
Our next order, 11BB, is the sum of $150,000 of unexpended stabilization funds under this 2019 CIP for the Williams Middle Burke School Boiler Replacement, to be transferred to the FY-22 CIP for 77 Webster Ave. of $150,000. Counsel Brown asked for a roll call.
Move on to the roll call vote for adoption, please.
Counsel Recupero. Counsel Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Abadina.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Vito.
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus.
Yes.
Counsel Judy Garcia absent. Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent.
We have now 11CC ordered at $145,000, $146.50, meaning the unspent, unused portion of free cash from FY-2019 CIP for the Early Learning Congress Playground Project, be transferred in the amount of, said amount, to the FY-22 77 Webster Avenue School Special Ed Curriculum Offices. Counsel Brown asked for a roll call vote.
Counsel Recupero.
Yes.
Counsel Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Abadina.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Vito.
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus.
Yes.
Counsel Judy Garcia absent. Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion adopted.
We have a motion to transfer $526,000, $114,000 from the unused portion of FY-21 Capital Improvement for the MCB Roof Project, to be transferred to FY-22 77 Webster Ave. for the Special Ed Curriculum Offices. Counsel Brown asked for a roll call vote.
Counsel Recupero. Counsel Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Abadina.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Vito.
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus.
Yes.
Counsel Judy Garcia absent. Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion is adopted.
Now moving on to our new business, we have a order introduced by Counsel Tenere Garcia regarding Traffic and Parking Commission looking to placing a stop sign on the corner of Parker Street and Clark Ave. and Carey Avenue and Clark Avenue. Counsel Garcia.
President, I make a motion to accept and defy on the suspension. There are no objections.
Seeing no objection, do you wish to speak on it? Nope, we're moving on. We have a next order introduced by Counsel Tenere Garcia, asks that the city manager instruct DBW to paint over the crosswalk on the four-way intersection at Tudor Street and Carey Avenue. Counsel Tenere Garcia.
Again, if I'm, I make a motion to accept and defy on the suspension.
Seeing no objection. Moving on to the next order, we have a conference, a request for a subcommittee on conference to discuss problem, problems, problem properties throughout the city of Chelsea, introduced by Counsel Noriel De Jesus and Counsel Tenere Garcia. Who does wish the counsel?
Mr. President, I make a motion to accept and defy on the suspension. There are no objections.
Counsel De Jesus asks that this be accepted under suspension. I will recognize the maker of the motion, and then I see Counsel Vito ask, raise their hand. Counsel De Jesus, do you have any comments or?
No.
Nope. Counsel Vito.
I don't have any objections. I just don't understand what problem properties mean and how we identify that. What does that mean? Like, is that like?
I'll clarify that the city manager and his staff have a working list of what they have called problem properties. They have regularly scheduled meetings, either weekly or on a monthly basis, to how to address this between different department heads. I think the counselors are looking to work with the city manager on those properties and probably identify new ones that have been given complaints by the constituents. Is that a proper way?
Do we have a subcommittee on housing that is active? Look, I love subcommittee and conference meetings, they're great. I'm just trying to.
We do, we do have a committee, a committee on housing and community development, and it could be used, or. We do have a committee on housing and community development, and it could be used, or we could use it in a conference if there's maybe other councils that wanna join.
I'm just offering ideas. Thank you for clarifying.
We have an order that passes under suspension, we have an order requested that the city manager instruct the HR Department to make sure that they put onto the water bill the time that senior citizens can apply for the tax write-off program, introduced by Council Recupro. Council Recupro?
If you can speak on it?
You have the floor.
A lot of the seniors might forget when the program starts and how, because there's a limited amount of people that can apply for this. So I wanna make sure that the senior citizens who are eligible to work can get the information to let them know exactly, 'cause every month they get a water bill. So to let them know that this is the time to apply, and this is the time when you cannot apply. The whole point is to make sure that the senior citizens are not left out. Thank you.
We have the next order introduced that the city manager instruct the utility companies or a company that works within the city streets to put better posting when the job is being done, and put signs telling residents what is closed and the alternative routes, entered by Council Recupro.
I'd like to adopt under suspension, I'd like to speak on it.
Council Recupro makes a motion to adopt under suspension, you have the floor, sir.
Lots of times, these utility companies come into our city and decide they're gonna do what they wanna do. They don't post wherever they're supposed to post, or they close roads, and people that live in our city don't even, it has happened to me, I go up a street and it's closed. And because they don't tell you exactly what is closed, we should require them to let the people know of the city what's going on. You can't just come in, well, that's because they're allowed to, I don't know if we can do anything about it, but they come in, they just dig up, they close the roads, and the people don't know. They should tell them, this road is closed, there's an alternative, there should be posted, and let the people exactly know which way they can go and which way they cannot. I don't know if the city is out, I can, I've been doing this for a while, asking for the same thing, and I get the same answer. The answer is, we cannot tell utilities companies what to do. By state law, they may, we not mandated to tell them, so what can we do about it? If we cannot tell them within our own city what to do, what is the point? So they can come in and do what they want, and the poor citizens of our city has to suffer for it? I would like to know exactly what can the city do to these utility companies that come in and do this? What can we do? That's it, I just wanna exactly know. How do we make them comply? Or can we, or can we not?
Next order introduced by Council Recupro, that city manager look into building a community center.
Community Center.
Community Center.
Oh, the Community Center?
Yes.
I'd like to adopt under suspension, I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, sir.
Um, we got half a money, and within that money is said that this city does need a community center. That was specified by the federal government saying, here, give a community center. We don't have a community center. For years, I've been trying to get them for the citizens. A community center is beneficial to all. It serves this purpose in many different ways. One way, what it does is unites all the population of our city, because it's young, old, and from anywhere of the city, they can go. It's not gonna be free. The cost is gonna be one point four million dollars to run a community center, plus whatever it costs to make, to buy a building or buy a section to put it in, right? But it will be, many times, the people that are here will be charged a small fee to maintain it, but the benefits outweigh the cost, because it creates a community. When I was a kid, I grew up, even in this city, when my children were young, they would go to the YMCA. The YMCA was a community. All the kids from, it didn't matter which part of the city they were from, knew each other. We do not have that. We have community schools, yes, we have a community school, but does a community school serve all the people? No, it doesn't. Community school is limited, and you have to put an application, and there's certain amount of people that can go, and a community center allows anybody, any age, to go and do it. So even the federal government says, we need one. Why can't we have one? What's wrong with us having something that benefit the whole community? There's nothing wrong with it. We spend money on everything. Spend money on your own future. That is your future. The future of this city depends on what you build for the people that live here. You want them to stay here, you don't want them to be transient and leave. That is the whole point, is to have a community center. Community center specifically means a community, and it's a good thing to have. Thank you.
Council Taylor?
I just wanted to let people know that President of the City Council and I were on the ARPA Committee, and the ARPA Committee did, there was a consensus on that to, to make that one of the priorities, so I think that this is a good opportunity if we want to have kids, you know, engage in some productive things, including, you know, sports or martial arts or whatever it is, or just having somewhere to go after school and all this stuff. The Boys and Girls Club is great, but they can only do so much, and I think that this is a real thing that people need to consider. I mean, a lot of good, I think, could be done by doing this, a lot of bad things can be avoided by trying to be proactive with our community, so, you know, I would, I would encourage the city to try to make it happen with some of those ARPA funds. Thank you.
We have the next order introduced by Council Recupro regarding city manager look into building a parking garage for the benefit of the residents and businesses in the city of Chelsea. Council Recupro?
I'd like to adopt under suspension, I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, sir.
For many years, I've been trying to get a parking garage for our city. A city is getting more crowded, more people have cars, and there's no way for them to park. You say you want your city to grow, you want your city to, people to come and shop in your city, but where they gonna park? Where they gonna go and shop when there's no way to park? At least you give them a way to park their cars, no, and go shopping. We said in the beginning, well, when we fix the Toban Bridge, there's gonna be spots on the Toban Bridge. The Toban Bridge is already all taken, there's hardly any spots for people to park there already. So, a parking garage is beneficial to our city, because what it creates, it creates an environment where people wanna come to downtown and shop. They know they have a place to park where their cars are not gonna get towed. I know there's something within the capital improvement program that says, within two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, they should build a parking garage. That's a long way away. Maybe we should do something sooner to build a parking garage for the people that are here, because our city is just growing. Wait when all those buildings that are being developed now have parking. Where you gonna, what's gonna happen to our city? It's gonna be even worse, worse than it is now. So it's a good thing for us to try to make a parking garage. I know it's expensive, everything in this world is expensive, living is expensive, so why not try to make a little better for the people that are here, not only better in that sense, but also for the businesses. The business will be the beneficiary of this parking garage, along with the people. Thank you.
We have a next order introduced by Council Recupro regarding the city manager look into ways of notifying residents of important events, not only through the internet or the Chelsea Record, i.e. electric billboard. Council Recupro?
I'd like to adopt under suspension, I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, sir.
Okay, the city always says one thing, it's, I've been, I hear it all the time. We advertised, we put it in the Chelsea Record. We put it on the Facebook, we put it here, right? But you forget, a lot of people don't get the Chelsea Record, a lot of people don't go on Facebook. I can see right now, the city wants to do something, or, well, I don't know, the school department is different than the city. When you go down Eastern Ave, at the end of Eastern Ave where the Mary C Burke School is, there's a big giant billboard that says, do not park here. It's there constant, and it's written in English and in Spanish. It tells you, do not park here within this amount of time when the schoolchildren are there. Everybody that goes to Eastern Ave is gonna see it. Why can't we have a big billboard stationed like they do, right there in front of City Hall? When any important event comes, it should be written in English and in Spanish, and people, ninety percent of the population of our city drives down Broadway, it drives down the middle of town, or walks through it. So if they see this giant billboard, they know exactly what it is. Not that the city says, well, we advertised it. Where? On the Chelsea Record. What if you don't read it? What happens? We advertise it on the internet, what if you don't have it? So shouldn't we refer to all and let everybody see exactly what it is? If they can do it for the school, why not do it for everybody else? If you go down Eastern Ave, you will see the giant billboard. So I'm always asking, why can't we put something stationary here? I would like to see, uh, the city manager at least put something there that the people know exactly what goes on all the time. There's nothing wrong with that, that's being transparent and telling them. Thank you.
We have a next order introduced by Council Recupro regarding the city manager, I'm sorry, Council Recupro and Council Lopez regarding the city manager asked the Mullahs Market Incorporated and Home Depot to pick up carts all over the city. Council Lopez?
If there's no objection, I would like to speak on it.
Seeing no objection, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, many years back, Market Basket, the Mullahs, they had a van that used to pick up their shopping carts. Now, the city picked them up, I know the city manager had like a dumpster where, you know, if they didn't pick up, DPW used to pick up and throw it there. And we were so kind and nice to Market Basket that we would drive in these shopping carts and bring it back to the lot. But if you see around, all around the city, it's always Market Basket's shopping carts, Home Depot shopping carts. So we want to see, you know, these big organizations to be responsible and pick up their own shopping carts, not the city, this is not our job, it's their job. So I would like to ask, so we can contact them and do something about it. They are all over the city.
That motion passes under suspension. We have the next order introduced by Council Recupro regarding the city respond to the order of June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, requesting that the city manager look into creating a Park and Recreation Department. Council Recupro?
I'd like to adopt under suspension, I'd like to speak on it. Is this possible?
You have the floor, sir.
Many years ago, this city had a Park and Recreation Committee. We should have it. Every other city has one. I don't know why we don't have one. It doesn't take much to have one. They could be in charge of handing out permits to the parks, they could be in charge of maintaining the parks. From what I remember years ago, Joni Lanzillo used to run the parks, something to do with the parks, you would go to her and she would run it. Now, the park is run by Ms. Cravat, and she runs a lot of other things. So I believe that the parks should be its own entity, it should be its own, it should have someone to run the parks, to issue permits, and to maintain the park, like every other city does. And it will be beneficial to the city because the parks would be maintained by, we're paying, oh, I forgot to mention, we paid a company over, what was it, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to clean the parks. So if we're paying someone to clean the parks, why not have our own division? We did that with the Water Department, why not have a Park Department? There's nothing wrong with that, might as well, and then it'll be run by us instead of paying a different company. So I think it's a good thing to have a Parks Department, or look into it, at least have one, where it's run by its own, by DPW, whoever runs it, it doesn't matter who runs it, as long as it's run, and it's, instead of us paying other companies to pay, to run it or clean it, it's the same thing to us, I believe it's a good thing.
Council Vido?
President, I actually agree with my fellow counselor. When we first created the Recreation Department a couple of years ago, I remember Council Robinson and a couple of other folks expressing concern about the marriage of Chelsea Community Schools and the Recreation Department. We wanted it to be a separate entity, and we were concerned that that wouldn't happen. Over the course of the years, B. Cravata has a lot on her plate, running Chelsea Schools alone. Over the course of the years, we saw recreational staff housed at Williams School, meetings about recreational concerns housed at Williams School. I think there needs to be a division, I think we need to explore that, I think we need to talk about it, and I don't know who we're paying to clean our parks, but we have misspent our money, because our parks are disgusting. I live on top of Highland Street and Bellingham, there's a park across the street. It's a tot lot, it's just a park for kids that are maybe three, four years old, but it doubles as a doggy park, there is poop in every corner of the grass, it doubles as a dog park, it doubles as a place for teenagers to go, because we don't have a community center for teenagers to go. And so I think that we really need to have a serious conversation, that we're having a growing city, we have new people in this, in the community, but we're not investing the manpower, or woman power that we need to be able to keep up, and, and I really do think that it's time that we have a conversation. In fact, if the brother counselor is okay, I would ask that, rather than get a response from the city manager and waste time, that we actually move this to a subcommittee on conference, because I think it's important enough that we need, in merit of a much lengthier discussion, one more than we can handle here at the council meeting. Are you amenable to that, counselor?
Yes.
I move that we move this to a subcommittee on conference?
Seeing no objection, the amendment has passed, we'll set that up. We'll have a next order, it was a Council Lopez and Recupro regarding the city manager instruct DBW director to add road markings to indicate double lanes for automobiles on Hawthorne Street from Central Ave all the way to Broadway near City Hall. Council Lopez?
I'd like to have a suspension, if there's no objection, I would like to speak on it.
You have the floor, sir.
I've been noticing that from Central Avenue all the way to City Hall, you know, there's some old lane that, 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 you know, showed people how, you know, there's two lanes in the area, but people are using only one, because there's no marks on the road, so I would like to see if they can mark it so people know, you know, they indicate it's two lanes in that area from, from Central Avenue all the way to City Hall.
We'll now move on to the next communication, I'm sorry, our next order, which is the city manager instruct the DBW to send electrical company to fix ornamental light that is not working corner of Central Ave and Hawthorne Street near the La Prisita store to Central Ave. Council Lopez and Council Recupro. Council Lopez?
Yes, I would like to adopt under suspension also, if there's no objection, I would like to speak on it.
You have the floor.
Thank you. This ornamental light, or decorative light, whatever you call, it's been out almost six years since I've been here. I belong to the verification committee, and I ask if we can fix this light, and nothing has been happening. You know, I think it's time to fix this light. I don't know how many times we put orders to fix lights around the city, and it seems like all the time, we got more and more lights out. So we need to fix this ornamental light. Thank you.
We have, Council Recupro?
I agree with my fellow counselor. Many times, we want these lights fixed, and they stay for a long extended period of time and no lights get fixed. And there's always, we have a company that fixes the lights. They should go around, we did it before, I asked before, me and my fellow counsel, I asked that they go around and tell us which lights are broken and which are not, and when do they fix them? We asked for that. So I don't know why these lights stay, where I am, there's two lights stay on all the time, all day and all night, and we have a company. So if it's not an electrical problem from ever source, the company that we pay money to should go out and fix them. Thank you.
Next order introduced by Council Lopez and de Jesus regarding the city manager instruct DBW director to contact the electrical company to fix all lights that are not working on Eastern Avenue from Central Ave all the way to Broadway Clinton Street. Council Lopez?
If there's no objection, I would like to speak on it too.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. From Central Avenue all the way to, actually Clinton Street, I know, I talked to Council Counselor Norreale de Jesus, there's a whole bunch of lights that are not working. Again, this is a, we have a company that we pay to fix all these lights, and it's been going on for like two years, these lights are not working. We need to do something, you know, to, to fix all these, these lights.
Thank you. We have the next order introduced by Council Robinson regarding that the city manager instruct the DBW director to fill all potholes around 14 Bloomingdale Street. Council Robinson?
Adopted shenanigans under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing none. We have an order introduced by the Council Robinson that the city manager update the council on the following projects. Forbes Surface Enhancement at Park and Pearl Street. Council Robinson?
Adopted shenanigans under suspension if there are no objections.
We have an order introduced by Leo Robinson, ask that the city manager update the city council on police and fire appointments.
Adopted shenanigans under suspension, and just quickly, that, I know that we have some people that are actually at, um, in fire training, and I'd like to see them be brought back up to the city council and be sworn in, in front of the council, so the councils can know who the new fire, uh, people are, who the new police officers are coming into the community. Thank you.
I appreciate counselor's order. You remind me, we actually had tried to organize this back in September, but then, as you all know, that we had another COVID surge. So because of that, the idea of bringing all the firefighters and police officers with their loved ones in the room, we canceled our normal combining of this. So we are in the midst of rescheduling the event, so that once again, we can properly welcome all the new hired police and fire. And we'll be working with Chief Kais and also Chief Andonizio. And I'll make you aware of when that event is.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, we have an order introduced by Council Leo Robinson to provide an update on the number of water meters replaced and how many are left to replace.
Adopted shenanigans under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing none. We have an order introduced by Council Avellaneda regarding the appropriation of the following months from the community preservation fund, $185,600 for the Governor Bellingham Carey Roof House and structural water damage repairs, $64,000 for the Governor Bellingham Carey Roof House and water structural damage repairs, $252,000 for the Mace Basketball Court Rehab, $400,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, pre-development. Do I have a motion?
If there are no objections.
This is, it is new, so I, I believe that we have to go to a second reading. Oh, well, wait a minute, let me get a clarification.
That was before.
Can I ask the city manager, on community preservation funds, do they require two votes, or two readings?
They do.
I would say so, yeah. Okay. It is, it does require, it is a correction of a previous, but we'll still do two readings. So Counselor Robinson amends his order to move to a second reading. Um, we have all new orders, financial orders, 22 F-50. Okay. We have the first order, which is a motion for the capital improvement program loan order. Counsel Robinson asks that we move this to a public hearing.
And a second reading.
And a second reading. Counsel Brown asks that we move the next one, two, three, four, five financial orders. Actually, is it, no, more, hold on. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I have seven. Seven?
Six. I don't have.
Seven.
We have seven financial orders introduced by Counsel Brown.
Let me just count. One, two, three, four, five, six. Which one am I missing?
We have the overlay surplus account to the Department of Appraisal Services. We have Mass General Law, Chapter 64, Budget Procedures, FY18, FY19, FY20.
Yep.
We have the authorization of $161,000 to the, to the Department of Sewer Infrastructure Account. We have an order of $117,159 to the 550 Appropriated Stabilization Fund, CIP. We have an order of the unexpendited portion from the Capital Improvement Project 2020 for the M-CBC roof to the 2022 Chelsea High School Roof Project. We have an order in a sum of $260,017 from the Stabilization 2020 Capital Improvement, Williams Middle School, to go to the Chelsea High School Roof Repair Project, and number seven.
And the 500,000. If you could just read the overlay, I don't have that one. I have the other six. So.
So the overlay is, we have an order that the city council authorized appropriation of $96,000 from the overlay surplus account to the assessors Department of Appraisal Services.
Can I include that with the others?
Yep. So we all have seven orders that Counsel Brown asked that we move to a second reading. That concludes all of the items that are on the new business. At this time, I'll ask if there's anyone that needs to make an announcement on anything in the city of Chelsea. Counsel Brown?
Well, I don't have an announcement. I just want to congratulate.
Any announcements at this time? Counsel Robinson?
Actually, I wish everybody a happy Passover and Easter this weekend.
Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate Lizzy Alvarez. She's a Chelsea youth here, member of the Boys and Girls Club, member of the Boys and Girls Club. She's been attending for eight years. She's a, she serves as the Keystone Club Secretary. She also volunteers at the soup kitchens, and also at the shelters. Two weeks ago, she was elected, or she won the Youth of the Year, the 2020 Youth of the Year from the Boys and Girls Club. That award allows her to go on in May to try to win the whole state. So I want to congratulate her on her efforts, on her well-being. She's a senior in high school, and just want to congratulate her and wish her family well, and thank the Boys and Girls Club for highlighting such a wonderful person in our community, and I wish her the best. Thank you.
Counsel Linda Vega Maldonado?
I just want to make an announcement and remind folks that this Thursday, April 14th, La Colaborativa, in partnership with a couple of my colleagues here, we are sponsoring our Easter basket giveaway. And it begins at 3:30, and it's going to be in the new location where La Colaborativa gives the food, does the food distribution.
So this is the, on Sixth Street, in the, underneath, in the parking lot?
Underneath.
And the previous commuter rail lot, or the previous use was the, I want to say, the MITC Center Parking Lot at the corner of Spruce and Sixth. Counsel Taylor, then Counsel Vito.
So I'd just like to remind everybody that the Chelsea Rotary Club is going to be hosting our telethon on Chelsea TV to benefit the Ukrainian refugees, and this is really a huge, huge, uh, problem. So many people have been displaced, so many people have had to just leave everything and behind, and just escape with their, the lucky ones have escaped with their lives. And we, the world really, I think, is stepping forward to try to help these people. And here in Chelsea, that's, that's kind of our way. And so we want to do everything we can, and the Rotary really encourages everybody to step up and, and help us raise money. The telethon will be April 28th on a Thursday, and we'll have more details coming as we get closer. Thank you.
Counsel Vito?
I know I said it earlier when we were talking about Earth Day, but I, I got the details right. I didn't have it at the time. So Earth Day, Green Roots is hosting a couple of events. On April 22nd, they're doing planting of trees from 9:30 to 1 o'clock. And on April 23rd, they're doing the annual city cleanup from 9 to 1. If you have any questions, you could go to greenrootschelsea.org or call them at 617-466-3076. Thank you.
Does anyone have any moments of silence? Counsel Robinson?
Yeah, former police officer Johnny Ames, who passed away.
Please rise, provide a moment of silence for former Officer Johnny Ames. Thank you all. That concludes this meeting.